Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, March 28th, 2017. Order is at 6:30 PM. Ask that you please stand for the invocation by Captain Jennifer Clinton of Salvation Army, and please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, I would just thank you for allowing us to be here today, Lord. Father, I would just pray that as the decisions come across the council's table, Lord, Father, I bet you just be with them, Lord, as they make these decisions. Father, I would just pray that you let them be your eyes and your hands and your feet in the community, Lord, Father God, so that they can do the best they can for our town. Father, I would just thank you for their support. We thank you for their positions. We thank you for all that they do for us, and in your name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Span, here. Minchuk, here. Yuzlak, here. Barron.
Family Emergence.
Pettit.
Here.
Lamarcus.
Here.
Ian Hardaway.
Here. The sixth president, five of four. Uh, potential communications remonstrations. Uh, Mr. Pettit, this is probably more for you than it is for anybody else. It is from Township Trustee's office. Dear Mr. Hardaway, on behalf of SS Constantine Helen and Philip Topco's Ladies Society, I request that the town council grant permission to use any space availability provided through Lamar signs to the town of Maryville. The Ladies Society is planning their 10th annual benefit spaghetti dinner for the Ross Township Food Pantry. In the advertising to promote this fundraiser would be greatly appreciated. It is important to mention that Ross Township Food Pantry has received over eighty-nine thousand dollars from this fundraiser over the past nine years. A press release and information about this event are in closing. Thank you for your consideration of this request, and please extend the invitation to all council members to join us on Tuesday, Thursday, May 4th, at 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the church. The food is great, and the bake sale is always delectable. Sincerely, Joseph D. Schutig Jr., Ross Township trustee.
That's for you. Uh, Donna called me already, so we just need to change the date on the artwork. We'll post it if that's what you guys...
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we always do it.
All right. Okay, uh, we have a CBD, CDBG public hearing tonight that's gonna kick off the council meeting. At this time, I'd like to open up the, uh, CDBG public hearing, and here are the opening remarks. Each spring, Lake County Community Economic Development Department applies to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for new funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. One of the application requirements is to hold public hearings in the communities where CDBG funding is allocated in order to obtain input from the local citizens on proposed uses of the new funding for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. The town of Maryville CDBG allocation is approximately one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand four-hundred-and-thirty dollars. The most common use of CDBG funds is for infrastructure, including street reconstruction, sanitary sewers, waterline extensions, storm drainage improvements, sidewalks, and projects to remove architectural barriers handicapped accessible, such as curb cuts and wheelchair ramps. CDBG funds may also be used to eliminate slums and blight through demolition of unsafe buildings or other clearance activities. CDBG-funded infrastructure projects may only be done in areas where the neighborhood is at least fifty-one percent low to moderate income, according to HUD's guidelines. In most cases, an income survey must be done to qualify the area for funding eligibility. The income information taken by the survey is strictly confidential and is used solely for the purpose of determining the area's eligibility for CDBG funding. Handicap access projects and demolition may be done anywhere in a community without need of an area income determination. The public hearing is just the start of the application process for Lake County. There are a series of legal advertisements and comment periods that take place during the summer prior to final grant approval from HUD in late August. The new CDBG funding is released to the county and its entitlement communities on or around September the 1st, and needs to be expended by June 15th the following year. After public comment tonight, three documents need to be read and adopted. The affirmation, the affirmative action program, section three, understanding, and a resolution authorizing the town executive to submit a project proposal to CDBG funding. Finally, project application and supporting documents need to be submitted no later than April 21st, 2017, for review by Lake County. At this time, the floor is open for comment. Is there any comment? Is there any public comments? See, none. Uh, let me see. Let me see. This is the citizen participation plan.
Should be a motion to adopt the citizen participation plan, Mr. President.
At this time, we entertain a motion to adopt.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilman Pettit, that we accept the citizen's participation plan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries six to zero. Uh, next is, um, the affirmative action program implementing section three of the Housing and Urban Lea- Urban Development Act of 1968. Motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve affirmative action program implementing section three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries six to zero. And finally, uh, we, uh, Lake County, Indiana, section three, understanding.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Lake County, Indiana, section three of understanding. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries six to zero. That concludes the public hearing for the, uh, CBDGC.
The all councilmen, they got signed all three sheets for ground.
Okay, pass it around. All right, um, at this time, we need to, uh, we need to amend the, uh, agenda so that we can add ordinance number seventeen, well, before, let me get ahead of myself. A resolution authorizing the directing town council president to submit a project proposal for community development block grant funds for the fiscal year 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve resolution seventeen dash.
Lamarcus.
Lamarcus, dash zero nine. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, do we know from Bruce what we're submitting?
Not yet.
Projects haven't been selected?
No.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries six to zero.
President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add in, uh, a public hearing for resolution seventeen dash ten. Is that correct, Mr. Bishemi?
That's correct. Public hearing should be added on page three of the agenda prior to action on resolution seventeen ten itself.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we add ordinance number seventeen dash zero two to tonight's agenda. Is there any other discussion?
So, public hearing, Mr. President.
Public hearing.
O2 is already on the agenda.
Okay. Open for a public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay. All right. City agenda, council payable registered voucher for March 28th, and along with town council minutes from March 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Minchuk. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries six to zero. Uh, standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuk. Just a couple of quick reminders. The street department is coming out, uh, the week of April 3rd for everything north of Seventy-third Avenue. They're gonna be doing a leaf and, uh, branch pickup for all of us living older divisions like myself. We get a lot of tree branches that fall down. Then they're gonna be going south of Seventy-third Avenue the week of April 10th. Um, also, keep in mind, uh, waste management's gonna be getting a little bit more stricter on the recycling, so be aware of what you put in your recycle bins. They're gonna start tagging people, so, uh, I think the big, uh, problem they had was with plastic bags. Plastic bags actually don't go in the recycle bins, so, that's all I have for today.
Mr. President, I have two items under Mr. Minchuk's committee, and they're more, they're not local, they're more state.
Okay.
And I don't know if you have an update, uh, if Bruce has gotten a meeting with N. Dot yet.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, we've got a couple of issues. Um, one's actually, again, in Mr. Span's ward, and I've got two in my ward. Uh, again, I really, really need to see guard rail or the retaining ropes on those two, uh, ditches by Gino's and by Catch Twenty-Two. I drive it every single day, taking my daughter to school, and every day I'm waiting to go by there, and there's gonna be a car in there. Now, it's not slick now, it's not a big ask, but then again, we've asked for the railroad tracks to be taken care of on 55, Don, and it's an absolute joke. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous what's going on. John, I don't know what else to do with the railroad in the state of Indiana with that crossing. It's, uh, you know, I mean, I guess we turn to Chaz and Karen, and maybe if all of our constituents start calling in, bitching and moaning, maybe N. Dot and the railroad can get their act together, because it isn't our crossing, it isn't our road, but it's all our residents going over it, and it's, it's, it's falling apart again.
It's been...
You know, and I've, I've heard, I haven't been over there, but I've heard the same thing as, as the problem over at Turkey Creek, by the golf course on Madison.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Yeah, it's starting to sound...
You know, again, you don't want us on your railroad right-of-way, and God forbid, you know, we go on there and a flagger comes and, and shoo's us off, but when we ask for something from the railroad, it falls on deaf ears, and it's getting to be a laughing work. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous, and I don't know what to do, John. If you've got any insight, um, do we need to call Eddie Melton? Do we need to call Julie Olthoff? Do we need to call, you know, uh, Sue Talion? Um, I don't know. I, I don't know what to, to do, so, be forewarned, Rich, if I sit down to meet with N. Dot, I'm bringing up these issues to him, along with the bridge on 101st Avenue. So, you know, I think it's, we've waited long enough, Don. I don't know if you're getting calls on it. Uh, I drive it every day going up to, to work on Forty-first Avenue, so, I see it every day, so, I don't know.
Span, didn't you come?
Nope.
How many years was ago was that we, that they fixed that? Four or five?
Uh, I'm trying to think. Matt or Chief, do you guys know? I can't remember. Bruce said no, but it isn't that long, Rich. It's not been that long, and it was just an asphalt fix.
Well, that's, that's because they keep putting the wrong stuff in.
Yeah.
Fix it like they did the wrong...
Exactly. Yep, exactly. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, yeah, and the, the other thing is be mindful that the newsletter did come out, and all of the things that Councilman Minchuk discussed about the, uh, recycling is in the newsletter, and so we have to be mindful that they'll leave your, uh, recyclables right there at the curb, and we'll be getting phone calls, so. Uh, council affairs, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Uh, yes, I would like to publicly thank Chief Petrush. I gave him a call. I had calls from several people in my area regarding teenagers hanging out, maybe after dusk, past curfew time, and he has promised to send out more police patrol. So, the one woman did see you, chief, and she called and thanked, thanked me for calling you, but I want to thank you personally, okay? And then one more item. I had caught a fellow dumping cement. He had big chunks of cement that he was dumping, and he eventually put it on another property, and Detective Jeff Rice, he investigated it for me, and I think we have that under control. That's it.
Anything else?
No, that's it for now.
Thank you. Uh, personnel policy and employee benefits, anybody have anything under Councilwoman Barron's committee? Public safety, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
No report at this time.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
Jan. Good evening. Um, I just want to share with the council that we've had some damage at some of our parks due to NipSCO trucks, not subcontractors of NipSCO, but NipSCO trucks accessing our property without permission, um, and the parks that they accessed, accessed was, uh, Stephick and Jennings. There's major damage there. Um, we did get ahold of NipSCO, and we do have claim tickets with them, and they assured us that in the spring that that would be repaired. Um, I'd also like to let the council know that at Jennings Park, uh, the NipSCO, the access to the park was, is an underdrain that leads to Kaiser Ditch, um, that was also destroyed, and, uh, Rich Kandera, uh, said that he handled that with NipSCO as well and put a complaint in with them, so, we're gonna be on the radar to make sure that is, uh, fixed. Uh, Rosenbaum Park, I had some, a little bit of vandalism from a vehicle accessing that park. Um, Public Works assured me that in the spring they'll also repair that as well. Um, the parks brochure is completed for the spring of, summer of 2017. That will be going to the printer at the end of this week, and the same brochure, we're trying to cut down, uh, the copies that we make to save on our budget and go green, so that brochure will also be put on our town's website. Uh, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Orlich? Environmental Affairs, uh, in Councilwoman's absence, Matt.
Thanks. Um, just want to remind everybody that we started our rain barrel program again this year. Uh, we advertised through a press release to the newspapers, and, um, we have our brochures that are in all the town department offices, and we have advertisement on our website, so if anybody's interested, uh, visit our website or grab a brochure and order a rain barrel and, uh, try to help out our, uh, our cause here for repurposing, uh, these barrels for stormwater management. Thank you.
And then, uh, tell Liz that I did get her email about the workshop at Mercy.
Yes, yes, there's...
I have another engagement.
Okay, yeah, there's thirty-nine million dollars' worth of funding available through the Volkswagen, uh, you know, they, they, uh, changed their, uh, or fudged their numbers on the diesel and the emissions, so there was a lawsuit, and Indiana's getting thirty-nine million, so, trying to serious, figure out a way to capture that.
Thank you. Uh, Luxus Public Relations, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
No report.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, later on, we added the public hearing for the, uh, tax abatement, uh, for the building, uh, on the north side of the Grand Trunk Railroad, uh, between the railroad and, and Menards. Um, hopefully we'll act favorably on that. That'll be a large, I believe it's a hundred-and-eighty thousand, a hundred-and-eighty thousand square-foot building, um, that Becknell is proposing to build, similar to what they have in Northland's Crossing on the Hobart side of, uh, of Mississippi, so, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Utility Liaison, Councilman Span.
Uh, you know what, I, I'd like to talk about the accident on the wall for Bellos. I really don't have anything for utility.
That's over there by you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the accident reported, so, I thought it was a kid, it was a lady fell asleep. I think she lives in Miller. And, um, hopefully we can get a resolution on it. Also, I'd like to mention something about the fire department. We had, uh, two-hundred-and-ten incidents.
Two-hundred-and-ten fire calls?
Yeah, just calls, uh, thirty-six of them were UConn's, forty-one fire alarms, PI, I don't know what that is.
Accidents.
Accidents, forty-seven accidents.
Okay.
And there was eleven full arrests, which is very critical. And the next one was a hundred-and-fifty-nine total, and a stabbing, twelve full arrests, thirty-one personally used.
What that is, Councilman Span, is that every time there's a call for ambulance or the police department, a lot of times the fire department, uh, follows up, follows out, follows them out there to those, that's why the number's so high. Okay. Uh, abandoned properties, a couple of things, uh, Mr. Pettit. You would know that...
I, I know too much, Rich. I'm the guy who know, who knew too much, so I'm not gonna...
Sometimes that happens.
It, it does happen, and it's, uh, I will, as the councilman for that area, I will take a wait and see as to what happens with the old mill. I'm gonna leave it at that for right now, under public.
Well, 'cause you know, whoever bought it only bought the first two lots.
They only bought two out of the three lots. I got the tax cards in my briefcase, I've already talked to the guy, and I'm taking a wait and see. I'm, you guys can tell by the tone of my voice, I'm not too happy about what transpired, so we'll leave it at that.
They, they are in a flood zone, too, so they can't, they are in a flood zone, so that's another consideration.
Who bought it? Who bought the property, the two lots?
A man.
Well, I figured that, but do you want to give his name?
No, not at this time, Marj. I don't, I mean, it's, it doesn't really matter, we're just gonna, Bill and Sheila are gonna have to wait and see what he decides to do with it. He doesn't have any idea. He had no idea the condition of the building. He didn't know we had two engineering reports. Um, you know, I just, I found out some other information from Lake County that just kind of put me in this tone, so I'll just leave it at that. Let's just...
Okay.
Move on.
You, you're at least a year away from any resolution.
Yeah.
All right, um, the other thing is that I, uh, I've, fighting in abandoned buildings, had a meeting with, uh, representative from Broadway Plaza, and they're in the process of selling that building, so, selling the whole plaza. They got, they've got a couple of, uh, possible buyers, so we just go wait and see what happens. I, hopefully they'll come back next month again, uh, and see what we can do to offer what kind of incentives we may have as far as chip or whatever, uh, facade grants for the rest of the building, and, uh, but I, the one thing that I made clear to them, Councilman Pettit, is that we would not give them a facade grant to sell the building.
Right, no.
We're not gonna do that.
No. Can't, I don't think you can buy the ordinance, can you, John?
You can't buy the ordinance, but I don't want...
It's not the purpose.
Somebody coming to us and saying that, you know, we just want to fix it up, and six months later they sell it. We don't want to do that, so...
What's the address of that area?
It's down at fifty-four-hundred block of Broadway.
West side there.
Fifty-third and fifty-fifth.
On another matter, Mr. President, under your committee and/or my economic development, uh, Councilwoman Yuzlak and Lamarcus know about this. Press, I think, was there. We had a, about a half an hour discussion about the Strack and Vantil Building, Seventy-third and Taft, and as I told Marjorie and Roxanne I would do with the rest of the Plan Commission, I reached out to Frank Vantil. He called me back on Saturday, uh, said, he gave me the lowdown that the leases on the businesses have been renewed. Now, that's just, uh, as John can attest to a lease, it's piece of paper. I mean, if those businesses struggle out there and they can't make a go of it, which is a concern of the Plan Commission, you know, whoever can sign leases all they want. I sign leases every day for Lamar. Um, there are cancel clauses in them. Um, he does not know what's gonna happen with the building yet. He just retained a realtor to start marketing the building, and they're still working on, on his contract, so, I told Mr. Vantil I would follow up with him. I may also follow up as redevelopment commission president, uh, with Jeff Strack. Uh, I think one of the papers reported that somebody from Strack said they'd be willing to talk to us, I guess, at some point, I don't know, um, but there's a, you know, there, I told him there's a big concern on behalf of the town, the ward councilman, you know, is concerned about it, you know, a lot of foot traffic from different areas, uh, especially a retirement center, uh, there in Jeff's ward at Town Center. Um, you know, we talked about tax incentives, tax abatements. I don't know what that does to his leasing or the profitability of the store, or, you know, a couple of Plan Commission members threw out, well, what about a different type of grocery store in there, or, you know, discounted, you know, uh, like a Ruler Foods or Country Market or something like that? I don't, you know, I don't know, but that's, I think he told me on the phone it's seventy-six thousand square feet.
Yeah.
That building, so, you know, I, I believe the date is April 11th. It's coming up here pretty soon, I think, isn't it?
That's what I read, that it was gonna be the end of April.
End of April?
April 28th.
April 28th, Joe?
That's right.
So, as I, you know, if I get anything going, again, we'll, you know, Plan Commission, we'll keep talking about a redevelopment, you know, it's really not in a redevelopment district, so to speak, but given the implications, I think we'd all, uh, take a look at that and see what we can do to, you know, if they want our help, you know, the hand's out, I mean, they're, so I don't know, it's up to, it's two businessmen, I don't know, I don't know their books.
Well, I'm glad you got ahold of Jeff Strack, because there are people calling every day, they are going to miss the supermarket.
Yeah.
So, let's hope something...
The building is actually owned by Frank Vantil.
Is it?
It's two key numbers that are owned by Vantil Supermarkets LLC, or Inc., I think it's Inc.
Incorporated, yeah.
Yeah, so, we need to keep an eye on it, obviously.
We should do, because I, I think the, the major impact is gonna be on those people that live at, uh, Town Center.
Mm-hmm.
Because every day you see them walking, you know.
Oh, sure.
Place, and it's gonna be a devastation for them, because now, especially with no public transportation, to get, uh, anyplace that they can't get to Sixty-first, they can't get to Ninety-third, so, now what are they gonna do for groceries?
Do you getting calls, Jeff?
Not yet, but...
I, I, I'm planning on it.
I haven't gotten, I mean, as far out east as I am, I haven't heard it, I mean, I haven't gotten any calls, but, like I said, Brian Deering brought it up at the last Plan Commission meeting, so we had about a half an hour talk, ladies, something like that, I don't know.
I've had some, I've had some phone calls and some conversations, so, all I can say is that we're concerned about it, and if we can fix it, we will.
Yep.
Can't make any promises.
Yep.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep.
That's all under abandoned buildings. Uh, first reading ordinances, an ordinance number seventeen dash zero four, this town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Broadway Tiff contractual fund for their year 2017, not included in...
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve order seventeen dash zero four on first reading. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Yuzlak.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes. No, that's gonna be part of seventeen two. Okay, that concludes first reading ordinances. Second reading ordinance, ordinance number seventeen dash zero two, an ordinance, town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance, town, town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established C-three highway commercial zoning district to a planned unit development district.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Minchuk, second by Councilwoman Pettit, that we approve order seventeen dash zero two on second reading. Is there any discussion?
Council members, uh, be aware that the version of seventeen oh two that we're acting on tonight is this eleven-inch size version that was on your desk when you arrived, uh, any, uh, if any council members have either on their iPad or a printed copy of this longer version that's been replaced, the action will conduct the public hearing on and take action on is this version right here.
What are the changes, then, John?
Uh, the changes are what we discussed two weeks ago on the fourteenth. We've specified the specific permitted uses of fitness center, restaurant, offices, retail We've specified the specific permitted uses of fitness center, restaurant, offices, retail sales shops and similar uses per the zoning ordinance. We've also specified that the land must be developed pursuant to the attached PUD plan for Buffaloville, which was approved by the plan commission. We've also specified that the plan sheets that Buffaloville submitted to the plan commission are also, also applicable and control the development. And finally, we've also specified in the revised ordinance that the property must be developed consistent with the retail commercial design guidelines that are part of our zoning ordinance.
Because this is the second reading ordinance, at this time we'd like to open it up to the public for any public comment. Any public comment? This is for the ordinance seventeen dash zero-two. Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Span?
Yep.
Minchuk?
Yes.
Yuzelak?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
And Hardaway?
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. Ordinance seventeen dash zero-three, an ordinance of town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the various stormwater funds for the year twenty-seventeen, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Span, that we approve ordinance seventeen dash zero-three on second reading. Is there any discussion? Because this is the second reading ordinance, at this time we'd like to open it up for public comment on ordinance seventeen dash zero-three. Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call.
Span?
Yes.
Minchuk?
Yes.
Yuzelak?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. That concludes second reading ordinances. At this time, uh, we'll go to resolutions. And at this time we'll open it up for a, uh, public, uh, meet, public hearing.
This is the public hearing regarding Resolution seventeen-ten, the confirmatory resolution designating an economic revitalization area.
Is there any discussion on this resolution seventeen dash ten?
Any in the public?
Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Being done?
Mr. President, to Mr. Buscemi, John, this form that Scott has developed in the past, this is a resolution confirming, but it's in, it, it also actually grants the tax abatement, correct?
Yes, it does. The council, two weeks ago on the fourteenth, passed a declaratory resolution. Which is an initial designation indicating the council approved the project and wish to grant the identified tax abatement. The Indiana statute, as you know, requires that after the declaratory resolution, there must then be a public hearing held. And then after the public hearing, the council must pass a confirmatory resolution which confirms the action that was taken on the fourteenth.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Any question?
To approve?
We, don't we need to close the public?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Do that first.
Okay.
No, what?
No. What?
We need to close.
Yes, we need to close.
Oh, okay, I see where, I see where he was going.
Second.
Sorry.
I thought it was just me.
I'll second to close.
So you got Lamarcus to close?
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilman Pettit to, uh, close a public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Now we're going to resol.
Motion to approve Resolution seventeen-ten.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve Resolution seventeen dash zero dash ten. It's a confirmatory resolution of the town council, town of Maryville, Indiana, designating the economic revitalization area. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. That concludes resolutions. Uh, is there any, no BCA action? Any old business? Any new business? At this time we'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's public comment, we ask that you come, uh, state your name and your address and please limit your comments to fifteen minutes. It's a three minutes.
Fifteen?
Yeah, we'd be a long time. Three minutes.
Okay. Dee Evans Heine, I lived in, in, uh, Maryville for a long, 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 long time. Okay, just a couple of miscellaneous things since I was sitting here listening. Talking about the railroad, I was working when they resurfaced it and I retired in twenty-eleven.
Been that long? Six years ago, six years?
Yeah, yeah, so approximately. Stracks, I was in Stracks Tuesday, I think, and they, I asked them when they were closing and they said it really, they were planning mid-April. It depends when everything's gone. And they had a lot of stuff gone in. And nice thing, we're hearing so much negative stuff and so mu, so much, uh, division and hatred and stuff. I read a really neat story on Facebook and this is for the police. This lady sent a thank you note to the police chief for giving her husband a ticket. She said he was in a truck, pickup truck, and he got pulled over. He did not have his seatbelt on. He had it in his arm, which the policeman told him he could have broken his arm and some ribs or something by having it around his arm. Okay. Uh, one month later, he was driving and something happened and he went out of control and he rolled and walked away. And so she said, "Thank you for giving my husband a ticket for not wearing his seatbelt." And I think that's a wonderful story to end on.
Thank you. Save a life. Any other public comment? Three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. President, common council. I'm here about public safety.
State your name for the records, please.
State your name. Andy, you never gave us your name, for the record.
For the record, Andrew Silvestre.
Okay, now they know.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Announcements, Board of Zoning Appeals meeting tomorrow night. Thank you, sir. March twenty-ninth at six-thirty, Stormwater Board meeting April fourth, uh, at four-thirty. Economic Development Committee, April the fourth at six P M. Plan Commission Workshop, April fourth at six-thirty P M. Police Commission meeting, April the seventh at eight A M. And the next town council meeting is April eleventh. Motion to adjourn.
Second.